I'm just kidding.
I'll tell you what, it takes a strong person to be able to.
I'm just kidding.
That's what I was saying.
Did you?
That's what I was saying.
When, uh, when we were just four years old.
Exactly right.
And did you not see this? The first time I've ever heard of Mary yet, I say this is a little girl from the.
So it's a, it's part of the family.
Well, I want to.
I'm just like.
No, it's my job.
I don't have his name.
I'm glad I have a school system to assist. Bottom line, the responsibility of my child being educated and.
Whatever the bitch.
It's right here.
Whatever the bitch. Take off about eight, eight or 10 feet.
Yeah, I put a 16-foot side shield on it.
We'll lead the pledge.
Serenity now.
I haven't turned on some music this afternoon. I was just going to do a prayer.
There you go.
Yes, okay.
All right. Been getting, getting business now that they're going to have more.
Okay, tonight our invocation is going to be given by Blake Arnold.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, God. We do ask your blessing over our meeting tonight. God, we pray for every family that's represented here tonight, and we pray for all of our commissioners and all of our elected officials, and pray for our county. God, I pray that you would help us to prosper, and I pray that we would honor you with our lives and honor you with our resources, and I pray that we would have wisdom and understanding that we would be able to use the resources that you have given us wisely, God, to honor you and to support the people of our community. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Commissioner Ferguson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Can I press your button?
Angie Hearn, Ward Plant, Sunny Hall, Darryl Hicks. We're all absent. We have a quorum.
Kenneth Miller, will you press your button on your tablet?
And Mr. Keen.
We got 14. We got 14 present and four, wait. We have another commissioner just walked in.
Ward Plant.
And Ward Plant, here. Okay. We have 15 present and three absent. Mr. Plant, do you want just a minute to open your tablet so you can get online with us?
You go here right there.
Madam Clerk, the next couple of voice votes.
Okay, let's go right on then. Next is the approval of the agenda. By voice vote, everyone state aye or nay.
Aye.
Any nays? Approved. Next on the agenda is the citizens' forum. Our first one is Jonathan York from the 1st District.
Madam Chair, I'm here tonight. My name is Jonathan York. I own Burt's Home Drive-In here in Camden, also own Kingdom Enterprises. So the county's been behind me on all my businesses thus far. I'm here tonight at the request of the President of United Building, or United Portable Buildings. His name is Casey Wiggins. Casey is wanting to move the operations here to the Benton County area. This acquaintance was made through John Snyder's. You know, he and I became friends through some of his visits here. So he got me in touch with Casey. I was actually coming here to, we were to sell buildings is what the idea was, but after Casey sat down with me and talked with me, he wanted to start building buildings here in Benton County. With that said, I was actually in the process of looking at the Walmart building before I found out the county was looking to buy it. But it was like two days before, so my time ran out. I am requesting, or I'm not even going to say requesting, we're looking for a facility that'll accommodate us, and as of right now, the old Walmart building is it. We need at least 60,000 square foot, and that's my understanding, that's how much the Walmart building is. The timeframe is very limited with Mr. Casey because he wants to get this started, so that's why he's asked me to get here to see if we could temporarily lease, rent, or whatever, the old Walmart building until we could either purchase the building outright or until, unless we could have the county or possibly someone to help us with some grants or whatever to build us a 60,000-square-foot warehouse here in the county. This is my home, this is where I want it to be. With that said, I just wanted to kind of go over it. It will bring about 20 jobs to the area. We'll be manufacturing roughly 120 sheds a month. I think the highest paid there is going to be somewhere around 125,000 a year. The lowest paid will be, you know, around $12 to $15 an hour. That would have to be ramped up, but eventually we're looking at 20, 20-plus employees. The tax revenue selling that many buildings in this area, I think, would bring a humongous tax advantage to the area, or not advantage, but income. I'm not a normal public speaker, so I'm kind of nervous, but we want to make this happen. He wants to do it rather quickly. This is already a well-known business. I think he started it in 2008, if I'm not mistaken. He's got two huge warehouses, one in Temple, Texas, one in Greenwood, Mississippi, both of which I have visited, and he wants me to be the plant manager here of this one. So I'm here tonight asking to see how to go about getting started in this county and to let you know we are on a short timeframe. He's wanting to get this started, but I'm doing everything I can to keep him going to another, another county to make this happen. So with that said, I guess I'll leave it, and if anybody's got any questions, I'll answer them the best that I can. But this is pretty much just to say we're interested in Walmart, the Walmart, to get started, to either lease or purchase, possibly in the future, not right now. I understand that there's a lot of work that's got to be done to it, so Casey would have to look at that, but we are prepared to put money up front for repairs. With that said, I don't know how much, he'll have to look at the budget. This is a new startup facility, so there's going to be a great amount of money coming up front anyway, so.
Mr. York, I know that a couple of months ago you inquired about the Walmart building, and you were told then that that is not zoned for commercial use, so you could not use that building for what you're wanting to use it for.
That is correct. I have, however, spoken with the zoning committee, and they did say that there's a possibility of making that a temporary through a contract zoning. However, I did not want to continue pursuing that until I spoke with the county to even see if there's a possibility of even getting the building. There's no sense in wasting anybody else's time.
That would be up to the city board, not the county.
Right. The lease of the building.
No, the zoning, if you change the zoning.
Right, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am, I understand that, but I guess what I'm trying to say is if the county's not behind me to actually lease me the building or whatever, then there's no sense in even going through the city to even talk zoning.
Does anybody got any questions for Mr. York?
Did they say, did they do about, they would possibly zone it for you, the city?
I spoke briefly today, and they told me I would have to come before the board. They did say there's a possibility. They did not say that they would do it. They did say that they would not zone it as manufacturing due to the fact that we're wanting it temporary, and they do not want to be able to have somebody else coming in there later behind us that's going to be making a lot of racket in the area. Our racketing stuff will be inside the building with nail guns and saws. That'll be the extent of that. They did say, though, however, it could be a possibility with what I'm trying to do to help improve the county and bring in taxes, the tax revenue and the jobs, that they could possibly look at zoning it as a contract zoning to allow us a certain period of time.
What kind of money would you be talking about per month?
Per month? I've spoken with Casey, and he said right now, without looking, it's hard to say, but he's looking probably around $9,000 to $10,000 a month to lease it. To lease it, yes sir. And of course, we do know that, without looking at it, we also heard that we would have to put money up front, you know, some, to probably even make it to where we can actually start using it. My understanding, there's some issues with it. So he may look at it and say he's not even interested, but he's wanted to find out before he flew in here from Texas to pursue it further, if you guys would even be willing.
Excuse me, what kind of building modifications in its present state would you be looking at?
At its present state, I think, as long as the lighting and everything is adequate, and I'm assuming it is because Walmart's got good lighting, then basically what we would have to do on a normal situation with a warehouse, we would put trunk lines through it for air compressors. With this being a temporary, if we can get it, then we would just put small air compressors throughout for our nail guns and things of that nature. The only other modification we would have to do is we would have to take one of the roll-up doors that's on a ground level and change it out to a 25-wide, roughly to almost the height of the building.
Those garage doors are separated by another concrete wall in the inner structure of that building, so any new doors would have to be added to the exterior walls of the facility, a new door system.
Right, and we understand that, and that's part of his budget, knowing that he will have to do that himself. We're not asking the county to do any of that.
Okay, we have a couple other commissioners. Let me remind you, when you want to speak, please push your button on your tablet so that I can take you in order, okay? Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, I spoke to you earlier about that, and you said y'all were interested in buying the building, and that nature, apparently we can't. Was y'all willing to give 104 million dollars for the building?
We're not ready to talk about buying the building. I did talk with him after I got off the phone with you. He did, however, say if the county was accommodating and we were able to get in there and lease it and see what the revenue was going to bring in, then he would indeed look at purchasing the building.
I called the city and spoke to them about the situation as far as it being rated commercial, not industry.
Right.
He said that they might give y'all a one-year deal, very, very, probably not a three-year deal. This here, this is something you would have to see with the city. I think we spoke about that. This ain't really nothing to do with the commission side of it. You'll be good with the city for them to let you do that. Sound like a great idea, but, you know, it's just like, just like me, if I want to put a body shop in, and I'm sure they wouldn't want a bunch of junk cars and everything up and down the side of the road. I think that's why they'd grab it done that way, so that's probably on the city side of it. Although I don't guess the county's into making money, it could make about 750 grand if you give 1.4 for it.
That was, that's not my decision to be made.
I knew you said you were interested in before.
Right. Well, before, we was even looking at leasing it, because we knew that it had been on the market to lease for a long time, and then unfortunately, I'm always a day late and a dollar short. So we found out about it two days beforehand. I spoke to a few commissioners, and it sounded like it was pretty much a cut and dry that the county was going to buy it. So with that said, I spoke with Casey and let him know what was going on, and he said, "Well, when the county buys it, see if they'll lease it to us."
Like we talked about, at the price the county got it for, it's a deal. I mean, there's no, you know, matter, I don't think I really, I don't think we're allowed to sell it or something like that, but it's prime property and a prime place, and I understand, you know, that side of it being where it is, but really, talking to the city there, I guess they're starting to talk to you, but, yeah, I think it'd be a far-fetched thing to get that changed right there. Especially right next to the church and.
We have another commissioners waiting in line, Commissioner Hill? Okay.
Yes, Mayor Shannon has said publicly several times that if any entity were interested in the Walmart building, that he would be all for it. That being said, we've already bought the building, and I know that we were looking at leasing as portions of it is an option to help the county offset some of the cost, but I don't know how long we have to spend the grant monies on what would need to be refurbished, but I think everyone here would pretty much be all for that building being put to the use of bringing jobs into the county.
Well, that's entirely true, and I had a conversation with gentlemen before the meeting tonight. With the contract zoning that the city is talking about being time-specific in a year, there would be, that would mean that they would be, that the city seems to not be for having an extended spot zoning issue. In fact, they've told me emphatically they're not for that. So if they do the contract zoning, then, and they're not looking to do a multi-year, I think that's exactly what they told you, that they'd be looking at a year. So that means that you would be looking to build out somewhere else, and, because you could only be in there for a year. And if you were in there for a year and you're going to gut a whole wall and put a door in, that may not be the most practical use of time or money, especially in the building. But as I've discussed with you about what we could sit down and look at in terms of long-term lease options on a building that might, could be, the state might be able to help with if it's something that you could be interested in, and we were having the conversation quite a few times, and don't mind talking to anybody with your company about doing that. So in that instance, I don't know that, also that we could use, because we're using a tax credit in the purchase of this building, I don't know that we could turn around and lease the entire facility to some, to a private industry doing it that way. So that would be something that seems to be an impediment to the whole building. A portion of the building, you know, that's fine, but the whole building, as I discussed with you, the fact that we are giving a tax credit with the purchase, meaning it's going to be used for county purposes, might also be an impediment to using it in that particular style, the way you're talking about.
Right. I could speak with Casey, he might not be opposed to having, you know, part of the space leased to someone else. I don't know. I'm just, like I said, I'm here at his request. I have spoken with Mr. Shannon, I've spoken with Mr. Lashley through email and via text, and we're just trying to, my company, or not my company, but his company, and I'm representing United Portable Buildings, is trying to do it here, and.
So the next step for you is to decide with your company, your person you're working for's company, to see if they want to sit down and start the process with the state, because whatever we did with that building is going to be short-term.
Right.
That's the city's decision, it's already been called and made, and I really don't see them changing, I don't think you do either.
Well, I wasn't aware of the one year, they didn't tell me, they just said for a certain time.
You can pretty much guarantee on that, but you can talk to them again for yourself. But that short turnaround time, you'd no sooner get going than you'd have to get out, and it, you know.
Right, yeah, one year wouldn't work. It'd need at least three to five years.
So that's why the whole thing starts, if you're interested at all in building in Benton County, we'll help you any way that we can. As I discussed with you, we can't build the building for you, we don't have that kind of money, but we would work to help maximize your grants, we would help maximize the incentives that the state might offer you if you chose to locate in Benton County with a brand-new facility. And we've got a spot at the industrial park that we love, that, you know, it's just got your name on it and calling, saying, "Come build here, come build here."
Would love to do that, and we will if I've got anything to say about it, but I do know that we do have a goal on two locations that's not in this county, that we can pretty much start on pretty quick, and he don't want to go to another county and start, and then move from that county to our county.
I understand.
So with that said, I understand everybody, I appreciate everybody's, appreciate everybody's time. I'll let him know what I've got from this, and we'll go from there.
Mr. York, I just had a thought. Would you be interested in buying the Lockhart building?
Actually, someone else had told me about that, but I don't know what the square footage is on it. If it's 60,000 square foot.
It's not 60,000 square feet.
What is it? How much is it, you know?
Five.
5,000?
Yeah.
No, we don't have, it's not even possible.
He's looking for a 200 by 300 building.
Yeah, it's got to be at minimum 60,000 square foot, and like I said, presently, the only thing I know of in Benton County is the Walmart.
Okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hill?
The Tennessee Vocational Rehabilitation Building out on the industrial park, does that belong to the county or to the state?
County.
Okay, how large is that building? Because the state.
It's not 60,000 square feet, but we're in a lease agreement with them. You receive a monthly or yearly, I don't know how we get it, but it's obviously going to be a monthly rate, but you get money from them for the use of that building.
We do, but I know they had scaled down their staff and everything else. I was under the impression that they were trying to slowly exit that, so I just didn't know if that was an option or not.
I don't think that building's 60,000 square feet either.
Here's a thought.
Okay, let's move on to the next.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. York.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the list is Stoney Flores.
I came to the council two years ago with this idea. It's called NPD, and COVID broke out, but I'm coming back to you now with it called Nope to Dope. And what it is, is to help our community and to help our children, and I was wondering if I could take it to the schools, if I could take it to the schools, because it's religion-based, that the ones that do sign up for Nope to Dope can have a prayer before school starts, so therefore that'll bring religion back in our school.
I think that would be something, sir, if you went to the school board and discussed that with them, the commission can't tell the school board what to do.
Right.
And so if you would go to them and outline your plan, I'm sure that they would be more than happy to hear from you and to work with you to implement that project in our schools.
Where'd they locate it?
Their meetings would be at Camden Central High School's library.
Right.
And the meeting dates is something that I used to be acutely aware of, but I do, do you know?
First Monday night.
First Monday night of the month.
On the month?
Yes, so we've got one coming up soon.
Six o'clock, six o'clock.
Oh, it is six, yeah, it is six o'clock. I apologize.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Next is the commissioners' forum. Do we have commissioners that want to speak? If not, we're going to move on to number four on your agenda, and I'm going to, first of all, we're going to recognize Blake Arnold. He is the president of the Camden Quarterback Club, and also with him are some other people. I know Jimmy Kenningston's here with the minor league football. Do we have anybody here with soccer tonight? Okay, you guys are welcome to come on up.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. I have a few of these maps, if anybody, I've spoken with a good portion of everybody in the, you've got one, does anybody need one that doesn't have one?
Okay.
I have spoken with several of you about the possibility of adding a turf onto our high school football field. Over the course of the last several months, we've went through several different plans and things that we think would be the best option for trying to get a youth minor league football field, as well as a soccer field in our community, and so I have, like I said, I've spoken to most of y'all, but I just wanted to kind of give y'all a brief overview. That being said, we, I believe, and I think that many of you believe, that this is a good move for our county, trying to get a facility where we can try to make the best use of what property we currently have and field we currently have, and all of the resources that are available at the high school, and being able to put a turf on our football field. This would be a joint effort between the high school, between the Benton County school system, and the county commission, and the county, so most of the funding would come through the Benton County school system, and so we would just have a portion of the money coming from the county. So I can answer as many questions as y'all have, if y'all have any, but I wanted to present that and see if, make sure, I guess, I don't know what the path forward is really. We've talked to the budget committee, and I know that we were going to try to find some funding, we didn't know if we was going to be able to get it this year, if we had to put it in next year's budget, but more than anything, just try to introduce myself and introduce the project, and then start moving forward, hopefully on a plan to get this done. So, does anybody have any questions?
You know, Blake, we talked about that the other night. You know, the only thing that I have before I'll support it is to have some type of guarantee that the minor league will get to play there, because I know how coaches are.
Sure.
And I would hate to come in and us spend $100,000, and then it's theirs and nobody else is going to get to play on it.
Yeah, and we, you know, when you mentioned that before, you was talking about some sort of.
Agreement.
An agreement, that's right, and what kind of timing that would look like, and maybe it does depend on the funding from the county. It's about a mil, it's a $1.1 million project, and so depending on, you know, how much of that portion the county wants to put forward, you know, and we've got a good relationship with the minor league football group, and we've got a good relationship with the soccer league, and they, the minor league football, I mean, as y'all use it now, as far as, you know, have you had a pretty good relationship, I think, with the, when the field's available, trying to work together. Jimmy and I actually spoke about this a little bit with some sort of committee or some sort of plan, and we've talked with the school system, and we know that scheduling would be an issue, or, but we have, obviously, the school is going to put up the largest portion of the money, so we definitely would, they would get first pick on the field, but as far as the minor league football and soccer, we definitely want to work together with them. Obviously, it tries to make the best use of the field. It doesn't make sense to have a facility like that and not try to get as many kids playing on it as often as we possibly can.
Mr. Arnold, are you saying that if the school puts up the most money, they'll get the lion's share of it?
The lions, I guess that's.
There you go.
Commissioner Hopper, he has a question.
Yes, sir. So if we do this, does that mean that we don't have to build a soccer field?
That is correct. So we, that would, this is to, in, I can go through that whole process, but that is correct, that is a, we, our high school football field has gotten to a place where it needs to be redone, and we also know that we need a minor league football field and a soccer field. So when we got to the place where we feel like it was not going to be a good financial decision for the county to be able to spend that much money on a soccer field, and there's other financial advantages to being able to put on the turf on the high school football field, and that's included, we don't have to do the, we don't have to water the field, the irrigation system and so forth, we don't have to worry about the maintenance on the field as far as the mowing, the chemicals that it takes to spray the field and fertilize the field, et cetera. Another thing is, is if we did an additional soccer field slash minor league football field at the industrial park, all of our maintenance costs doubles, because we're doing that at the school, and we're also doing it at the industrial park. We have to mow that down there, we have to pay for the light bill down there, we have to do all of those things down there.
So assuming that we get the memorandum of understanding, the way the commission would like, and I think that's only fair, this is the cheapest way that you can meet your obligation, if you feel you have any, to all of the children that are playing soccer in this county, all of the children that are playing minor league football in this county, and I think that it has a tremendous value for that, assuming that you get the memorandum of understanding of usage that you want and you're comfortable with. You will not get out of.
that it takes to spray the field and fertilize the field, et cetera. Another thing is, is if we did an additional soccer field slash minor league football field at the industrial park, all of our maintenance costs doubles, because we're doing that at the school and we're also doing it at the industrial park. We have to mow that down there. We have to, we have to pay for the light bill down there. We have to do all of those things down there.
So assuming that we get the memorandum of understanding, the way the commission would like, and I think that's only fair, this is the cheapest way that you can meet your obligation, if you feel you have any, to all of the children that are playing soccer in this county, all of the children that are playing minor league football in this county. And I think that it has a tremendous value for that, assuming that you get the, the memorandum of understanding of usage that you want and you're comfortable with. You will not get out of buying, of building any of these fields cheaper than maybe a couple hundred thousand that we could put in to help the school put this in. So if, after you think about it, there's no motion before you tonight, there's no resolution, anything, I wanted Mr. Arnold to come. It was an idea that I thought was worthy of consideration, and I wanted you to have some time to ruminate over it. And maybe they can get a quote or something where we can have a fixed cost coming into this and have something maybe available in March, so that we can potentially move forward and have this ready to, to play on in September. Or, I guess they play in August.
Or a football, or a soccer field next year.
Right. No, I think this is, I think this is definitely the, the best path forward, so we don't have to, to spend the money and do the soccer field and do the football field at the industrial park. I think between me and Mr. Jimmy and Mr. Chris, who's the president of the soccer league, we have all agreed that we think this is the best path forward, so that we don't have to do that. You agree with that, Jimmy?
Definitely.
Definitely better than, definitely better option than putting-
Painting fields every week.
Right. So that, that, that takes a lot of the maintenance and a lot of the work off of them being, having to do all the, like he said, the painting every week and the mowing and all of the work that would have to be done down there. That, that saves a lot of time and effort for them guys, and I think makes the best use of our resources.
Commissioner Preston, you recognize-
Mr. Arnold, I've heard your well-put conversation at budget. Thank you. I was mostly impressed with the numbers, the numbers, Jimmy, that you quoted. The children that are involved with the soccer, the children that are involved with football. Would you quote them again, please?
Okay, so three years ago, we had a hundred and fifty kids, eight teams total. And this last year, we had four hundred kids, eighteen teams, and three different counties.
A lot of people coming in from other counties even to be a part of our minor league football program. There was also, Mr. Chris had said, as many as a hundred and fifty kids playing soccer. And, and so the, the facility there at the, at the high school really, really does get used a lot. And there's a lot of kids, and it's, it's a, it's a good area right there. We got the lighting available. We got the concessions available. We got the bathrooms available. We got the security fencing available and everything there. So I think it's a good, I think it's a wise investment for our, for our kids, so.
Commissioner-
Coach Reynolds in the belt said they're wanting to work with us, because I mean, they're coming up there.
That's right. That's right.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Hello, Norman.
Hey, a couple of questions. One, do we have a lead time on what's gonna take to get this field manufactured and brought in?
Yes, sir. Sort of. What we did is we got a budget quote from one particular, one specific manufacturer. It's the same manufacturer that did the field at Huntington, and they also built the field at Bethel in Carroll County, two fields in Carroll County. So we have been talking with them, and they gave us a price and a lead time. And it does take them about three months to build the field. So from the time we get the surveying, engineering, and all of that stuff done, they'll need some time. Our push is to try to get it done this year. We would really like to get it done in the, before fall.
I'm very supportive of this. Me and the mayor touched on this some time ago, and I was not, and he'll tell you. But now, what you, you said the key words, the problem I had with using the industrial park site, you still had bathrooms, you still had lightings, and we're exceeding, we're exceeding hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that out there. So I do support this and being in time. And I want to also make the commission aware that we actually gained an extra hundred thousand dollars in our two million dollar capital outlay project. So I would like to recommend that hu, extra hundred thousand be considered for this budget. Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes. One, what sold me the most on your presentation was that there will be less player injuries on this surface than on the field as it stands. To me, that's the most important thing. I did have a question. So when minor football league and soccer are using the field, will they have access to running the concessions and using the concession areas to provide concessions for the fans and make some money? And will they have use of those facilities?
Sort of. Right now, there is, there's two parts to that question. Right now, the, the Camden High School band gets all of the concessions. That's part of the, what they, but it does, it still benef, they have access to it, so they definitely are able to get concessions. And what has been told to the Camden High School band is if they don't provide concessions for minor league football games, then the minor league football gets to do them. So they provide the concessions and they get the funding from that.
I, I was a band parent, and, you know, we all had to work our turn at concessions. I didn't realize that the band also ran the concessions for other groups that played.
They did. They do the minor league football as well, at least they have for the last several years.
Okay.
So it-
They built the buildings.
Still have that ability. And if I can say it nicely, it, the money from the concessions still goes to some of the children in our community. If it's through band, if the band chooses not to have concessions during that time, then the minor league footballer, some other group that wants to do the concessions would have that ability.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not.
Maybe we'll have a resolution for you to consider in March, and if not, we'll know, we'll, we'll keep you updated on how this is going.
I, I really appreciate y'all's questions, because Ms. Hill, you asked the best question. She does, I, no, that's no, that's no, but she asked some tough ones, and I appreciate that. I like good, I like thinking outside the box. So I appreciate y'all's time, and I appreciate, if y'all have any other questions, be sure and reach out to me and be glad to answer anything I can answer. So thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
It is my pleasure now, I'm going to introduce Ms. Stephanie Harker Road with Hyperion X Limited, and let her come up and make some introduction as to the people that are going to be making a presentation. I think you're going to enjoy what we have for you. I've seen some of this. Regrettably, I think I'm in part of it. So if you can see my face even larger in just a little bit, it might be bad, but Ms. Stephanie?
Yes. Well, good evening, everyone. Madam Chairman, Mayor Shannon, thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to be able to give you all this presentation. I think we were here, we, we have actually been here over a year in Benton County, and I think we've done one or two county commission meetings. And one thing that we have been very adamant about is that we do want to keep an open line of communication with you all. And we do want to, you know, come to y'all, you know, every, every month or every few months or different things like that, just to discuss, you know, the progress we have and just to go over things. Like I said, we, we've been here for a year. We've got our feet on the ground. We have our beautiful office right in the middle of, of Main Street. I think you, you most have seen it. So we are very thrilled of the progress we've made this year. And we just wanted to update y'all on that progress and also kind of give you a little, little insight, you know, of what, you know, 2020 stands to bring. So again, thank you for letting us, you know, come and giving us a little, little time. I know your time is, is precious, and we really appreciate that. I do wanna, real quick, we've got some people in the back that are trying to hide, that are a big part of who we are and what we do. If they wanna stand up, we've got Michelle Smith. She is administrative specialist. We have Mr. Scott Sparks. He doesn't have to stand up. He's tall enough. He's operations. We've got Ashley Little, which is our geologist, and we have got Taylor, which, they, look at those girls standing up. We've got Taylor, which is a geologist, and my son, which will not stand up, because I'm his mama, and he to, he totally does not want anything to do with me, Ryan Harker Road. So, and we have Jonathan Lord, senior geologist, and Adam is back there. He's our own geological advisor. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Tasso Arima.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, not, not today, but, you know, hey, I'll do that next time. I'll bring some pie.
Thank you, Chairperson, Mayor, and Commissioners. I really appreciate having the time again to present to you all. We changed our name to Hyperion X from Hyperion Metals. It's part of our journey to becoming a fully listed and fully domiciled company in, here in the U.S. As Stephanie said, we've done quite a bit over the last little over a year since we've established the office here in Camden, Tennessee, and I want to take you through some of those. And then really, this session is for information for you all as to what we plan to do over the next coming months to help educate, continue to educate the community as to what we plan to do on the ground and, and when we plan to come here again to, to update even further, and what we plan to do over this year and moving into next year. So a lot of really good things on the agenda over the next, really starting over the next few months. If we can go to the next slide. I just wanna outline that within our company, we definitely have the mindset of having the safety and health and of the community at the forefront, and also the sustainability of manufacturing what we wanna do of our critical minerals and the metals that we wanna produce here at, at the front of our minds. It's definitely a big thing for us. Many of you all were part of the PGS Consult's materiality assessment we did late last year, which goes into helping us to identify and understand what's very important to stakeholders and the community being one of the largest stakeholders in everything that we do. We aim to build a business which is sustainable and sustainable for the community and sustainable from a financial perspective as well, moving forward over time. These, today, in the world we live in, you have to build sustainable businesses if you wanna stay in business. You have to take into account what's, what the effect on the community is gonna be, what the effect on the environment is gonna be, and especially, and what we're trying to do here at Hyperion X is to build a business which will stand the test of time and actually be a leader in sustainable manufacturing of these critical materials. Next slide, please. What we're aiming to build here is, is essentially develop what we call the Titan Critical Mineral Project. It is a, we cover approximately eleven thousand acres thus far over the McNary Sand. The McNary Sand is a rich, critical mineral deposit or sand-hosted formation that runs throughout the hills here, all the way from up in Henry County, all the way down into southern southwest Tennessee. Right here, the nexus here where Camden is with its access to excellent transportation and infrastructure, together with where the, where the resource lies here in Benton, Henry, and Carroll County, makes it an ideal opportunity to, to really start here and then grow the development of this, this type of critical minerals. These critical minerals are the minerals that go into our advanced industries. The key minerals that we will look to produce here are titanium and rare earths. These go into our defense, defense platforms or into, into our defense industry. They're also used in our electric vehicle and our power industry. And typically, these critical minerals, especially titanium and rare earths, are controlled right now by Russia and China. So there's a big need to bring back home to this country the development of these critical minerals. And just by, by what's happened geologically is that we're lucky that these minerals are contained here in the, in the hills of, of Camden and, and Benton County. So it is something that is, people should feel proud about, because these are, these are right here in, in Benton County and can help to reshow these critical pieces, these critical minerals for our industries. If we go to the next slide, please. So what we've done to date, we've spent a lot of effort, time, money in assembling a large position in the belt. Unfortunately, you can't see it too well there, but Camden is right there. On the first map, on the second map is our property position with the outline of the McNary Sand. We will make this presentation available to everyone here. And you can also come through the office and, and we can go into more detail. But what we did over 2021 is that we defined what is one of the largest resources, well, the largest resource of its kind in North America, and it's probably one of the largest resources of its kind in, in the world, containing titanium, rare earths, and some other critical minerals. We did this by spending quite a lot of time and money in drilling over three hundred holes throughout the belt over last year and taking approximately fifteen tons of bulk samples. So we take from each one of the drill holes, we were taking out samples, putting it in a fifty-five gallon drum, and then sending it out for the metallurgical test works needed to understand how we can process, at a, at a, at a high level, how we can process these, these minerals. From the work that we did last year, we actually were able to not just uncover this large resource, but also attract the attention of some of the major users of these critical minerals. These include the Kamurs plant down the road. We have a memorandum of understanding with them to supply them with these titanium minerals. A lot of those titanium minerals that they utilize right now are imported, some of which are imported actually from the Ukraine, so that's a big issue right now. And in addition to that, we've, we've secured memorandums, memorandums of understanding for all the other critical minerals that we will look to produce from here. So it's something that, again, because of the location and of where this asset is, it's unusual that you find such a rich deposit in an area like Camden in the middle of the U.S. Typically, these sort of deposits are found in remote locations in Australia and, and Africa or South America. Finding something of, that contains this sort of concentration of critical minerals here in the middle of the U.S., in an area where there's a wealth of infrastructure, skilled labor, and the ability and will to, to put this into operation is, is very, very unique. We've started our environmental studies, and those will continue over this year, and that includes the groundwater sampling that we have been doing for almost a year now. Last May, we started that. And in addition to that, it includes threatened and endangered species surveys, and also we, we do some cultural surveys as well with some of the, identifying some of the native sites in the area as well. These, all these work programs will continue throughout 2022 and into 2023 as we move towards finalization of, of the project, getting it ready for, for construction. But we've done a lot, and we continue to expect to do a lot more of this over the remainder of, of 2022 as well. If we can go to the next slide, please. So with, with that, we, we do a lot on the ground to identify what's there. We do a lot of it on the ground to also understand what we need to do from an environmental permitting perspective. That's very important for us. But one thing that is really important for us, and really important for me and the team, is that we wanna make sure we educate the community and get out there and support the community where we can, and also educate everybody here about what we're planning to do. As Stephanie and Michelle have always said, we have an open door policy. We want people to walk in and ask us questions. This is something that we, we sort of hold very dear to us. We also want to help educate the younger generations as to what the potential, what this means for potential future jobs here in the county, so that they're not having to think about only traveling outside of, outside of the county for work. So with that, we've, we've done a lot over the last year, and we intend to do a lot more. Sponsorships, advertisements, we try hire local where we can, try buy local where we can. We try participate in as many of the local events as we can. We are talking about enacting some scholarships for students within the West Tennessee area. We actually have started some scholarships in our other operations, and we, we would like to start scholarships and grants for some of the students in, in the West Tennessee area. And of course, we've set up our Facebook pages. This will continue our community engagement over this year, next year, and for, and through operations. It's something that we intend to keep up to speed everybody in the community with this. With that as well, we did put together a video, on the next slide, please, which has just, in the last week or so, has gone live, and we, we encourage people to, to view it. It is a video about our operation- It is a video about our operations and about Iperion X. Iperion X, we are a metals technology company. Titanium, it's sleek, it's beautiful metal, it's strong. We have a process that could produce titanium at lower cost and that's when we realized this technology could disrupt titanium industry. So for us, we're going to bring about an edge of titanium and that's going to change the world. But we also want to have a big impact on communities, communities like Camden.
We do have lots of kids here. When they graduate, a lot of them end up leaving. You know, Iperion can offer those jobs. There's an option here now.
So to see that, yes, families to be closer, this will be major for us. This is hope and I'm all about that.
So having Iperion X here is going to be great for our students, our faculty and our staff. We want to make sure that we help with workforce development, allowing those students to do some internships and we're also looking forward to seeing some of our students come to work here once they graduate.
More park systems, more recreation opportunities, an improved quality of life.
I am a Benton County girl. I've lived here most of my life. Iperion X, their goals, what they want for the community are no different than what I would like to see for my community.
We've got an opportunity to bring something back to this community. The community is really proud around their hunting, fishing, farming. So the health and safety of the community is super important to us.
Every time that I have talked with people from Iperion X, they have embraced the concept of sustainability. One of the things that most intrigued me is that when they're going through the mining process, that they will work with local landowners in order to rehabilitate the land for the purpose that the landowner wants.
Within a matter of months, it'll be completely reclaimed, topsoil pushed back and there'll be very little evidence that we were ever there.
I feel like the land will be better after they get through with it. You know, this is something as a landowner, I'm getting a little more excited about it every day, not just for the financial benefits that it brings, but just for the community and everything else.
Having that bond and that open line of communication is very important to us.
They have proven beyond doubt that what they're going to do is going to make an impact and I believe in it.
They have been making donations to schools, donations to social service organizations.
Last summer, we were having a football camp.
Iperion X, we talked to them about the needs that we had and they ended up donating that allows children in our community who couldn't afford to play sports, that allowed them to have a sponsor. They've done above and beyond what we could have imagined.
We are building a business here which is going to last. We want to bring back prosperity to this community and it starts with Camden and then with the rest of Tennessee, the rest of the US and then the world. Great, thank you. So here, what we're doing here is a core piece of what we want to do with Iperion X. We eventually want to take these minerals and we don't want them shift offshore to then be processed into the metals that are needed to be used. So we have a strong relationship in Utah with the University of Utah and a technology which was developed there by the Department of Energy or by funding via the Department of Energy to be able to take the minerals and turn them into the metals. And you saw some of the University of Utah and the Utah team on that, on that video. But eventually what we would like to see is that here in West Tennessee, we're able to extract sustainably these minerals and produce the critical materials, the metals that then go into a lot of the advanced industries that we're looking to reshore here in America. So with that, this year is the year where we put together a lot of the engineering studies and hopefully finalize the engineering studies over this year and early next year ahead of when we plan to start construction. Our first engineering study called the scoping study should be complete by the end of this quarter and I hope to come back in April to present the numbers around that. These typical operations employ a lot of people and there's a lot of capital investment involved in them. But ahead of that, what we're planning to do is to start some work here in the community, essentially with a demonstration facility to help that education process. This, what we're calling the demonstration facility essentially does, on a small scale, the processing, which will be done at a larger scale. We're going to start with what's called the de-slime circuit or the initial separation of the fines and then eventually look to add in the other equipment needed to produce what's called the heavy mineral concentrate. This will be done on one of the properties that we own off Little Benton Road or have option to own and we're looking to acquire it in the next few months. It's really something that we chose, we wanted to do here to really help, help that education process as we move through the rest of this year. A lot of the work that we're going to do at the demonstration facility could be done at third-party facilities in Southern Florida or we could send the, the samples off to, down into Australia like what we're doing right now and do the sampling there. But we would like to do some of that work, bring it here and allow for the community to come in and observe and look and see what we do at this demonstration facility. If you go to the next slide, please. In addition to that, we have been discussing with the University of Tennessee to assist us in preparing for our sustainable reclamation rehabilitation efforts. Over the next few months, over the last few months, we've been in significant conversations with the Institute of Agriculture out of the University of Tennessee and the University of Tennessee's Extension Office here. And we're looking at a range of activities which we hope not just helps educate again the community, but helps us to identify the best pathway forward for reclamation rehabilitation as we get into these operations over the next few years. These things will include things like improving soil, improving the soil post-mine reclamation rehabilitation, looking at native species of grasses and trees, looking at carbon sequestration opportunities when we do go into the rehabilitation of our operations and looking at how we can identify land use options for landowners post the extraction of these minerals out of it. If you go on to the next slide, please. This is nothing that is groundbreaking here, I guess. What we're aiming to do is build on a foundation in the industry of not just being able to rehabilitate, but bring it to a better state than what it was before. Here you see an Australian mine, which would be typical of what you would see out here. During mining operations or the mineral extraction operations, you're extracting these minerals, it's just sand, you extract the minerals out, the sand goes back and you rehabilitate behind yourself. If you look at that mine, for example, that's actually from Western Australia where I grew up. Within a few years, it was back to pasture land, which was used for farming again. So this is something where we already have a baseline where we can bring the land back to as good as what it was before. What we're aiming to do though, is to try and improve on this and provide a, essentially a menu to landowners as to, would you like your land to go back into native grasses? Would you like your land to go back into native trees or do you just want it to go back into pasture land? We want to have that data there and we want to have that relationship with the University of Tennessee, the Institute of Agriculture, to look at that best practice going forward. Again, it's a big thing for us on the sustainability front to have the most sustainable options available for landowners once, once the operation has ceased on their land and reclamation and rehabilitation has happened. Next slide, please. So for 2022, our plans are to enact, to build out this demonstration plant. We're planning for that to be erected and operational by April of this year, probably erected during March of this year. So very soon, it's a very small plant, it's only a demonstration plant. Over the remainder of this quarter, we aim to complete our scoping study and then come back and be able to present the results of that to the community here. They will have a lot of the job numbers, what those jobs are, what the construction capital will be. We have a good idea of what that is now, but we want to finalize that and then be able to provide a succinct report on what that, what that is. Then we want to continue that work. We need to then do further engineering work around what, finalizing the engineering designs of what needs to be built here. That's going to need more capital, more jobs in the area. And then we aim to also complete the permitting activities over the remainder of this year and hopefully be in a position where come 2023, we're at a point where we can look towards construction of the, of this development. So that's it. The next slide, please. As always, please just reach out to us, call us, come see us and we'll be happy to discuss anything with you all. What I will say is this is definitely for education. I want people to voice any concerns they have so we can try and mitigate or address those ahead of time. I do, there's, we're not asking for anything. You're lucky in that the critical minerals are here. This is an excellent location to build a business like this. What we would like is just the support of the community and that's why we want to do more than what we've done already to continue to educate the community, to continue to be open about what we're doing and to have the involvement of everybody in the community to support us. Because if you support us, then we can, we can get this operation up and going. And if you support us, we can, we can let a lot of others in the US know about what we're doing here and that's going to just help, help our business go forward. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Yeah.
Hello, what timeframe, longish or you talking about being here for indefinite? Once you start, is this, ain't you cleaning out and you moving or how long?
Yeah, so it's a really, really good question. So we've, so the initial resource, as you see there, and please, sorry, we will share this presentation with everybody via a PDF. But the initial resource is very large, it's over 400 million tons of material that we've already defined and we continue to drill in the area and, I mean, I've been surprised we haven't really ever drilled a hole that hasn't had these minerals in it. So it's.
So it could be indefinite?
It could be a significant amount of time. I'll have, there's some numbers out there. We have to, we have to complete, we're a publicly listed company as well, so we have to complete those studies before we can give some, you know, more clear numbers and that's what I would like to do in April. But, you know, it is, it is a lot here. I mean, when you hit the mineralized zone, the McNary Sand, it's over 100 foot thick and, you know, we drilled just off Little Benton Road. We actually drilled down at I-40 and we still hit it there. It's everywhere. It's everywhere.
If you're not going all that deep, I mean, it's.
No, in some cases, we can go like 40 foot deep before we hit it, but in a lot of the cases like out, right out here in Camden and both in Benton and Henry County is sort of where it seems to have come closer to surface. So the combination of it being what we call in the industry a strip ratio, how much waste material we need to move to get to that ore is very low here. And in addition to that, having the facilities like rail, power, the river system here and also potentially a very large customer across the river, makes it the ideal sort of area to essentially start. This is sort of the nexus. When you develop these operations, there's two different types of plants that you have. You have a plant which essentially moves with the mine, is semi-permanent with the mine. It's called a wet concentration plant. It's what, you take out the sand, you put it just through a process with water and gravity and the heavy minerals split out from the lights. The light minerals are just sand quartz, goes back in the ground. That's your wet concentration plant moves with the mine. Those heavy minerals then need to come to a centralized facility called a mineral separation plant or a dry separation plant. And that's where you have probably more, it's all electrical equipment in that, but you have to, you can't really move that around. So that's where we're hoping to, we're looking at locations around Camden to site that. So that would be here for, you know, decades, whereas the mine, well, many decades, and whereas the mine could move around every decade or so, for instance. And there could be multiple operations in this area because it's everywhere.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes, sorry.
You're recognized.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just simply want to say thank you. Thank you and thank you and the group that you brought here with you tonight.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hill?
I had the opportunity to talk to you at the ribbon cutting.
Yes.
And at the time, you know, the timeframe before you would actually get busy, that really hasn't changed much. But I was curious if you're talking about building the hard separation plant, if you'd determined where within our county you were looking to build that yet or are you still at the looking stage?
Still at the looking stage. We need to go through, we need to talk with, look at the opportunities out there. We also need to talk with the state about what opportunities the state can give to improve. There's some things which need to be improved, communications and I know broadband is coming in here.
Because we would really like to see that built here in our county.
Yes.
At all possible.
Yes. Camden is a natural nexus, although a lot of the initial operations will be in Henry County. Most of the, most of the employment will most likely come out of, just because of logistics, come out of Camden or Benton County. That's, that's the way we see it. In addition to that, you know, your loading, there will be, there's a lot of interest for one product, which is a ceramic product, which goes on the glazing for ceramics. There's a lot of interest out of Europe for that because the product out of here is very high quality. So there will be a need to export that high value ceramic product to Europe most likely. Ideally, one of those groups builds here in America, but the access to logistical infrastructure, thus the rail and the barge port system down here is important. So I would say, yeah, for us as well, from a financial perspective, from a business perspective, Camden is a natural spot for that centralized facility.
Commissioner Farr.
Question for you. Is this an open mining process in extracting this material or the sand from the ground or is it a process?
No, so it's an open mining process. You remove topsoil and you store topsoil to the side. You open up 10 acres maybe at a time of mine area. So you, and I should have had it actually in this presentation, but I'll have it in the next one, you extract out the sand, you put it through this wet concentration plant, you then fill the sand back in that void and then you claim.
You say it back as you go.
You have to put the sand back as you go, yeah. This is looking to be larger than I expected, but you, you want that active reclamation rehabilitation. We want that because it's more sustainable and that's, you know, the way you would develop these assets, it would be impractical to do it any other way. So this is where we want to work closely with groups like the Institute of Agriculture, Professor Forbes Walker, who is the lead soil scientist at the University of Tennessee's Institute of Agriculture, has spent, I think it was here yesterday as well, spent some time. We're going to look at practices and experimental plots on the ground we have currently to look at how we can condition that soil as it's going back. Because you can imagine if we push topsoil away, you know, a few feet of topsoil away, remove the sand, be putting the sand back. As we're doing that, there's probably an opportunity to push into that, you know, some nutrients, look at gypsum, biochar, some different opportunities there to improve the soil health and conditioning to maybe make it more suitable for a certain type, like if you want to put it back into trees, maybe we do something there. If you want to put it back into pasture, maybe we do something there. This is going to be a research that will probably go on for some time, but it's important for us to start it now so that in, say, a year, two years, two years' time, when we're actually operating.
Does your company do the reclaiming of the property itself?
We will have to do the reclaiming of the property actively, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Nynery?
Of the, let's just say you take a ton out of the ground, what percentage of that is the heavy metal?
It's a good question. So the resource is 2.2%. So the resource is 2.2%. Now, what in the, there's both higher and lower grades in that resource. So where you're going to be mining is probably going to be a little bit higher than that. So you're looking at at least over 2%. So really, you're putting more than 95% of that material back in the ground.
So in essence, you're going to get five pounds a ton?
Pretty much.
Product?
Yeah. Of heavy mineral concentrate. And then out of that, you have, that's rich in the titanium, rare earths, zircon, which is that ceramic mineral, and some other minerals as well, but typically rich in titanium, the titanium minerals and rare earth minerals.
And that separation, that five pounds versus 1995, that will be done on-site? It will be hauled on our roads?
So that five pounds, that heavy mineral concentrate, will need to be hauled to a centralized processing...
Or it'll be 1900?
Yes, yeah, no, no, that happens, yeah. There's a few different options that we're working through on the mining scenario, whether we put it back with trucks, or whether we put it back with a pump, and, you know, there's some mining opportunities, but that all happens on the site.
I was thinking about our road structure.
Yes.
You know, hauling 400 million tons.
No, 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 it's not, it's, it all stays, the majority of the earth movement is on, well, all of it is on the site. When you look at the, that five pounds, for instance, that's coming off. Initially, you can use trucks to haul it to the centralized facility. Over time, with our objectives from a sustainability standpoint, we would like to eventually pump that, similar to what you see the sand, but better, newer, to what you see the sand facility do. That's the best way to do it, keeps trucks off the road over the longer term, especially if we look to, if we, as we believe we can expand this operation, have multiple operations, we would want to be pumping that in. Economically, it's better, and from a trucks-on-the-road standpoint, it's better as well.
Commissioner Burke? Recognize?
You said the vein went from one end of the county to the other, Henry County to I-40. Will you be just mining one place at a time, or will you have several little reclaiming places around, or how do you do that?
Yeah, it's a good question, most likely several, because it's so big. So there's a right size for processing and mining equipment that you put together, and we're going through that, and we should have that finalized actually over the next few weeks. And then that would lead into that first engineering study which we'll publish, and that would be publicly available as well. But that is sort of, essentially, the idea is to have a cookie cutter approach, where you have that, and you just copy that in other locations. So maybe you have one here, you eventually have one in some other areas where we're seeing some promise in some other areas, and then have that all join back into one centralized mineral separate, dry separation facility.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, what about, what about timber areas that you strip with timber? What do you do with your brush and all of that, or how do you work all of that?
So it needs to be timbered before we go in there, and there's agreements with the landowners where the, where we have negotiated already upfront, typically in our lease agreements to, either they come in and take it, and they can sell it, or we reimburse them for what timber they've lost there. So you do, you go through, you have to remove that timber, you have to remove the roots. This is where there's some opportunities to maybe use some of that, the roots and the timber that's not usable to manufacture what's called a biochar, and then maybe put that back into the ground so that it sort of stays... Grind it up, they sort of heat it. I don't really understand the process that well. Professor Walker has explained that they heat it in the absence of oxygen, and it essentially then is sort of like, it's sort of like a carbon material which you can then put...
Like charcoal?
Like charcoal, and then you mix it back in.
Use it as a field?
Yeah, use it, sort of, you combine it back in, and it helps microbial growth and carbon sequestration as well. But these are the things that we'll have to look at with what we're doing with the University of Tennessee. But we do have to remove the timber before. This is also, we can't tell the landowner, in the case of the land we own, which will be approximately 1,800 acres, we, you know, we can choose what we do with it at the back end, and ideally, there's going to be a few options we'll outline. But in the, in respect to the other landowners, we can't tell them what to do. What we want to be able to do is give them a menu of, this is the opportunities that you could have, you know, you could do this back in native grasses, maybe back in native species of timber and trees, these are the results we've been getting, and they then tell us what they would like to do. We can't, we can't tell the landowners what they can do on that backend, within the respect of what's...
Do you have anything?
Yes, we have a lot of timber on one of our tracks, and it's, yeah, it's good timber.
Okay, I think I don't see anyone else asking to speak. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight.
Really appreciate it.
And we appreciate you.
I hope to come back soon again and update everybody again about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the mayor right now.
We have, I won't take long. First of all, I didn't bring them up. I'm getting older and fatter, and I just didn't want to bring them up. I've got some blue books down there that were given to you by Representative Reedy. They include other officials such as Sheriff Christopher. And if you haven't picked your blue book up, you can certainly come by the office anytime. The ladies in the office know where they are if I'm not there. Got your name on it and everything, and so please do come by and pick that up. The next thing is, is that, ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you how much we need an effective chamber of commerce and an effective economic development director. I hope to be bringing some good news for you soon, but I'm telling you that it started because we had somebody there to answer the phone. And when you get ready for your budget, I do not want to see the chamber eviscerated again. It needs to be a thriving body, and you've got a good person there with Ms. Matlock. We have a great person here as well with Ms. Wheatley, who's with us as well tonight. But when you consider that budget, I want you to think about the fact that they make a difference. And again, I hope to be bringing some very, very good news soon. And it probably would not have happened like it happened without an effective chamber and our now economic development director. We've got a great team in place, and we need to do what we can to keep that going. So as sometimes said, it's enough said now. I was contacted by Paul Summers regarding some pollution debris in the south end of the county, and he had every right to contact the mayor's office about this. It's a disgrace. There are laws on the books, but they all require the going in and doing things to property owners, taking the debris away and charging them for it, and it's a due process nightmare. And I've been reading those laws, and I hope to have something for you in March that will enable a system that the county can be proud of, that will protect the rights of the citizens. This is not a zoning movement, but it is using the existing laws to, and I can show you pictures that Mr. Summers sent to us to look at. There are other places in the county that are abysmal. I do not know why the people keep, this is not a landowner using it for a purpose. This is just a dump. That's what we've got here, just dumps. And like I said, so I'm going to have something for you to consider in March so that you can, but I wanted to give you some advanced warning so you could begin thinking about it, ruminating on it, talking with your constituencies about it, as to what you think is important and what isn't important. It may be that you as a body decide we don't want to do anything about it. That's fine, too. But there are things that we can do, and I think there are some things that we should exercise options to do, provided that we provide the citizens of this county with the due process that they're entitled to. Because some of it winds up with liens against their property, and that's never a good thing with governmental overreach. Even though we have the authority to do it, we should not do it unless the citizens are protected. So with that being said, you'll see more about that hopefully in March when I get finished with the review of everything and put forward a plan. If you have any ideas about anything regarding that, I'd be happy to discuss it with you at any time in my office. Call me should you have anything. But that's all I have, Madam Chair, for right now, and thank you for the good work that you continue to do here.
Okay, we're going to take about a five-minute recess. Good, how are you? Hello, Daryl.
Hello. I sent you a text, I didn't know if you got it.
I did, I got it. I saw it.
I don't have to, I don't have to work this week, so I'm not...
Good, how are you? Are you, you said you're not working this week? So then when you go back, though, you have to shake it all off?
You ask for it or something? Comorders or what? What do you do? Maintenance. So, you in there? Brr? Yeah, well, no, we're in there. So that'll be good. Donna's down there breaking in y'all's office a little ago.
He's taken all day. He'll put me free air.
I'm good.
Give him a room. About 69. Let's name. Ron, Ron, it's our calendar. 22, 23.
He must have turned it down. 60, 60.
These rest it up today. He might be ready.
Let's go. Let's go.
There's two spots.
We're at number four, number five on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. So we'll need a motion and a second to bring those to the floor. Motion by Dana Ferguson and a second by Daryl Hicks. All approve? Please vote.
This is a voice vote?
Oh, aye.
Aye. That'll be good, okay. The next is reported the public utilities. We can take a voice vote on that one also. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the approval of the Magic Valley Golf Course lease. A motion by Daryl Hicks and a second by Stephen Stokes to approve the lease for the golf course. Any questions?
Is this just a routine, I mean, same thing we had last time?
The, what I did is shorten it from 12 months if they don't use it as a golf course to six months so the county could get the property back faster. Because they're going to know if they're going to keep using it, you know, six months versus 12. But it's just the perpetuation of that which has been done in the past. They've already put a lot of work into the grounds down there. They proceeded as if they were going to have opportunity to continue using for the golf course, so yes, sir, it's just a perpetuation, a renewal. The only thing I did was drop it back from 12 months to six months if they ever went out of business.
Any other questions? Commissioner Preston?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll do better.
Okay, so you don't have any questions?
Mayor, if we talked about this at budget or property, I missed it. On the first page of the amended lease agreement, number one, Magic Valley agrees to surrender a portion of leased property consisting of 31.42, 49 acres. What's that telling me?
That was something that I thought was pre-existing to my taking over as interim mayor that y'all had done. When I spoke to them, the attorney who had knowledge of it, he thought that that had already been taken out. So this just clarified it in the lease stipulation so that we're not releasing a parcel that we have taken back control of. That's what I thought had happened, and that's... The, the, what I did is shorten it from 12 months if they don't use it as a golf course to six months, so the county could get the property back faster. Because either they're going to know if they're going to keep using it, you know, six months versus 12. But it's just the perpetuation of that which has been done in the past. They've already put a lot of work into the grounds down there. They proceeded as if they were going to have opportunity to continue using for the golf course. So yes, sir, it's just a perpetuation, a renewal. The only thing I did was drop it back from 12 months to six months if they ever went out of business.
Any other questions, Commissioner Preston?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll do better.
Okay, so you don't have any questions?
Mayor, if we talked about this at, at budget or property, I missed it. On the first page of the amended lease agreement, number one, Magic Valley agrees to surrender a portion of leased property consisting of 31.42, 49 acres. What's that telling me?
That was something that I thought was pre-existing to my taking over as interim mayor that y'all had done. When I spoke to them, the attorney who had knowledge of it, he thought that that had already been taken out. So this just clarified it in the, the lease stipulation so that we're not releasing a parcel that we have taken back control of. That's what I thought had happened. And that's, and if that proves not to have been, then I don't want you to pass this until we get clarified. But I think that's what's happened.
Something was done about three years ago. I don't remember all the factors in that.
I think you, I think you were able to take that and do some timber doings and things of that nature. So the county retains option, yes. So this was specifically excluded, which is what you, whenever you're not going to do a new call, you just exclude the portion that has already been surveyed out and in, in the lease. And so that way, we didn't have any, we're leasing back to them that which we've already taken control of.
Thank you.
Is that the wood line, the wooded area?
I think so, yeah.
One time we talked about cutting that timber off, I realized that would be going on a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of this lease for the golf course?
It's a regular vote.
Yeah.
It's a regular vote. Do you still have Mr. Miller that wants to speak?
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry.
County Attorney look that way.
I had Mr. Whitworth prepare it and, but I did not send it to Mr. Johnson for consideration.
Any other?
I do, this says 30 years. Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, that was the, the original one, I think, was 30 years, done in the 1960s. So this is just a perpetuation of that. I made the joke that would be signed the lease that some of us wouldn't see the end of. But again, as I said, if they ever go out of business, the county only has to wait six months for no golf course to go there. That's all they can use the property for. And then it automatically, it's a reverter clause and brings it back to us.
Okay, any other questions? If not, let's vote, please.
Mr. Burke and Mr. White.
Anyone wish to change your vote? We have 14 yes, two no. Motion passes. Next is number eight on the agenda, the approval of the fiscal year 2021 audit report. Motion by Stephen Stokes and a second by Phil Melton. Any questions? If not, let's vote, please. Derry.
Mr. Burke.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Okay, now we're starting our resolutions. So number one is resolution for the legislative body to agree not to spend any future funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act on any future projects before holding town hall meetings with the public in order to get the citizens' opinions on the best use for the funds. I need a motion to bring it to the floor. Have a motion by Rocky Preston and a second by Ward Plant. Floor is open for discussion. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, um, the purpose of a town hall meeting, in my understanding, is to give the community a chance to understand something the county is wanting to do, the time to weigh in, question, and for the parties responsible for whatever it is we're planning to do it, to explain to the community what we're planning, what it's going to cost, et cetera. Now, we have a town hall meeting every month. It's called the Oversight Committee Meeting, where everyone is welcome to come. Nothing that the Oversight Committee has done or recommended has been done behind closed doors, has not been made public, and that the public has not had ample opportunity. They can attend every single one and educate themselves and give their opinion. A town hall meeting for every single thing the Oversight Committee and the County Commission plans to do with these funds, in addition to an Oversight Committee Meeting, seems really redundant, pointless, and just delays anything that wants to be accomplished. So I, I think that calling for a town hall, a town hall meeting for every little thing is just going to bog down us accomplishing what these funds are meant for. These meetings are open to the public, they're well advertised, everyone knows about them. If you want to go to a town hall meeting, come to an Oversight Committee Meeting. It accomplishes the same purpose.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
This was not recommended by budget, and we also have had town hall meetings.
Commissioner Miller?
My understanding, other counties have had town hall meetings specifically to the public to voice their opinion on what they want to do with this money. And I think Benton County ought to do the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Plant?
Yes, I'd just like to bring the attention, Mr. O'Shea. I think your thoughts the other way. This is a one time in a lifetime that we'll ever get 3.6 million given to the county for the needs of what's best seen, found by the county. Some of it is earmarks such as sewer and water. Gentlemen, this is something that, I read Mr., the comptroller here's statement on it, watching on the film. He said, "Don't forget, gentlemen, you've got 48 years of water lines, sewer lines, and probably it's been in the ground, it's never been seen about." This money is being given to keep us in the future from being, "Oh, I'm broke, I done, done, it's done that." It's also, it is the citizens' money, it is the county, it's not, it's a gift from the state. And there's a lot of things, as Mr. Shannon said earlier, the cleanup at the Sugar Tree, Eagle Creek, Big Sandy. This is time for us as commissioners to appropriate some of this money to go into communities. And I just don't, I think, yes, when we say town hall meeting, everybody, no, there's six meetings every month up there, there's the law, everything that we got, we have them regular meetings. No, we're not aware when, just to hear lately, nobody knew when you met an Oversight Committee. We brought that up before. I mean, you told it here maybe, but very few people watches all this.
Must have your head in the sand.
Well, you, now, you're on a committee, and I'll just tell you that, I think it go in further.
You know everything else that goes on around here, don't tell me you don't know about the meetings.
Well, I'm not arguing you anything anyway. I'm telling what the people of this county would like to have a part in. They would like to have a part of what might be done, a new field at the ball school that we've got this money. Once you spend it and like you want to do out here at Walmart, it's gone forever. Now, these citizens would like to have an input, that's, it's, it's our courtesy. We ain't here because, they put us here and we work here for them, not for you or me or our thought. My thought ain't that big. Something that you may not be thinking about, as we say, a little sidewalk or a pervion to get the kids out of the handicap, a school bus, there's all kind of things. But we should ask and let's spend it wisely for things. There's something in the debt.
Commissioner Preston?
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the pandemic dollars, 3.2 million dollar. This money's not a gift, this money's not charity. This money was given back to Benton County by the federal government. Dollars collected by the federal government and former tax dollars paid by Benton County citizens. Paid by citizens. All more reason our county paying citizens, voters should share in the conversation as how this money is to be, how this money is to be. Free commissioners, and apparently I'm in this room. We're not, hey, we're not elected by the ex-victime citizens. Wouldn't they, this body right here elected? All the more reason to call for a town hall on how to spend this money, how to use this money. I have an assumption, based on my many observations, that some commissioners in this room have been influenced by one or more department heads. They voted. Why this is happening, I don't fully understand yet. I think it needs to be stopped, that's my personal opinion. Do these department chiefs have matters that concern projects that we are yet to know about? I ask the citizens, I ask the citizens in the audience, I ask the citizens, boys in this whole place, everybody pay attention. Everybody pay attention. And how these commissioners voted, and they're being influenced by, like I said, at least one or more department heads. You saw it tonight, we elected you interim mayor. You saw it tonight, we called the Walmart bill, and they got sent in. Just a few minutes, I give the floor.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I just wanted to respond. I agree with everything Ward Plant said about the citizens needing to be involved. I simply don't see the need to have extra meetings when these meetings are open to the public already, and everyone's welcome to come in and voice their opinion and speak to how best to spend these funds. I just think it's a waste of resources to have extra meetings when we already have meetings available.
Anyone else?
I, I, I don't like innuendo, I don't like allegations of impropriety. I don't know who you're talking about, Mr. Preston, but in the absence of fact and basis for fact, innuendo is not a proper venue in this, in this forum. That being said, I can appreciate your opinion. I've always appreciated your opinion. But I will tell you that in the diligence that I have put into preparing a budget for the use of this money, it involves hundreds of thousands of dollars going to broadband infrastructure. It involves millions of dollars going to water and sewer projects, and it involves monies that will be used to help our health department, our fire departments across the county. So, you know, if you want, if town halls are what is required to let people say that they want broadband and they want better water and sewer in their communities, and let them say what we already know they're going to say, well, if that's your will, then that's your will. But as we consider all the things that are being done right now on the, on the books, the city of Camden's looking to get 1.8 million, thereabout, for water and sewer. Holiday is looking to get 1.2 million. Write all that down, Mr. Plant, and...
Ms. Randy, I make your partner. I am writing it down. This is the first you've ever told that.
Well, because I wasn't bringing, I wasn't bringing the budget out, but it's not the first time I've told it.
I had that, you have never told this to this commission.
I've told.
I have all I know.
I've told you in the sewer board meeting, but that's okay. But as you're...
Go ahead with it, there's, I've got 1.8 for Camden, and I've got 1.2 for Holiday. And where's the other going, please?
You'll have it in March.
See, here you come voting to vote on things, you don't never tell what it's going to cost.
There's nothing that I brought to, don't want you to vote on tonight.
You're letting in the past all this.
There's nothing, there's not a thing tonight that I've asked you to vote on that hadn't been...
I voted no on Walmart because there was no figures, how much?
I'm going, I'm going to, as my, my friend, I believe Rocky Preston would say, I'm going to concede the floor.
Your point will take in, Mayor.
Do we have any other questions about this resolution before we vote? If not...
One question, what, what is the voting criteria, two thirds or majority for this one?
Majority.
Just one, I'll check before we vote it.
Okay. Okay, so if there's no other discussion, we'll take a vote now, please. Remember, if you vote yes, you're voting for this resolution. If you're against the resolution, vote no.
Can you explain that again? No is against the resolution?
Yes. Yes would be you support the resolution. Anyone wish to change your vote? Three yes, 13 no. Motion failed. Moving on to resolution number two. It's a resolution authorizing submission of an application for litter and trash collecting grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, I just want to let you know that budget approved recommended all the motions for the rest of the resolution.
Okay, any other questions? If not, please vote. Free Burke. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution number three. Resolution to transfer funds in the total amount of $43,432.88 from the Tourism Director Budget into the Economic Development Director Budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions?
All you're doing here is moving it from the Tourism Director line items to an Economic Development line item just for auditing purposes. You're not adding to any amount that you'd already budgeted for the Tourism Director. It's just putting it into the appropriate line items for an Economic Development Director.
Okay, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution number four. It's a resolution to transfer funds in the total amount of 22,000 within Fund 178 Capital, Other Capital Projects, in order to pay the engineering services for the Tennessee Tourism Enhancement Grant Project at the Patsy Cline Memorial for the Master Plan. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions? Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, this isn't considered new money, it's just a lateral transfer, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other? Commissioner Frazier?
Yes, Chair. This $22,000 to, that was spent, is that what I'm understanding, it's already been spent?
This is to take care of those services. This is a reimbursement grant, and so we'll file this and get, it's a $75,000 grant with a small amount of match to it. I was, in fact, I just had a, funnily enough today, I just had a, an email from the architectural firm, HRH, I think, is the one we dealt with, anyway, very nice, very nice group of people. This was put in place before I became the interim mayor, but we're finalizing to get all the plans drawn out for the development of this area for eventual use by the community as an amphitheater. So I, hopefully I answered your question and gave you more than you wanted, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
If there's no other questions, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? 15 yes, one no. Motion carries. Resolution number five. It's a resolution to transfer funds in the amount of $185.99 from the sheriff's repair of motor vehicles into the sheriff's other charges. Commissioner Hicks made the motion, second by Commissioner Ferguson. Anyone have questions? If not, please vote. Derry Fur. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Okay, resolution number six. Is to budget funds in the amount of $800 received from the state of Tennessee for the medical examiner, ROI fees within the county corner of medical examiner's budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? If none, please vote. If none, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution seven. Resolution to budget funds in the amount of $200 received from donations within Benton County Animal Shelter budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Number eight. Is a resolution to budget funds in the amount of $200 received from donations within the senior citizens budget. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions about this one?
Mr. Fer and Mr. Miller?
Anyone wish to change your vote? 16 yes. Motion carries. Number nine. Resolution. Resolution to budget funds in the amount of $5,000 received from the state of Tennessee TKD grant within the senior citizens budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. We have no questions, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution 10. Is to budget funds in the amount of $2,861.18 received from the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Airport Maintenance Grant Program within the airport's budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? If not, then please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Now, which should change your vote? 16 yes. Motion carries. Resolution 11. Resolution to budget funds in the amount of $32,950 received from the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the airport, airport taxiway connector project within the airport fund. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Free Bird? Anyone wish to change your vote? 16 yes. Motion carries. Resolution number 12. Is a resolution to budget funds in the amount of $1,500 received from the state of Tennessee for the Riverline Grant within the TRRD Fund 128. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. No questions, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution 13. Is to budget funds in the amount of $4,500 received from the city of Camden for their quarterly allocation within the Benton County Library's budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. No questions?
Madam Chair, Phil Melton has a...
I don't know if it matters or not, but on the, the actual resolution, it says 45,000 on the first line.
That is a...
An extra zero.
That is a mistake, and thank you for catching that, Mr. Nunrim, but that first line is incorrect. It is only $4,500. I don't, the library might enjoy 45,000, but it is only 4,500.
I'd like to make an amendment from the floor to take the zero out.
Remove extra zero from 45,000. All right, this is the motion to amend.
Madam Chair?
Okay. Everyone, we had a motion by Commissioner Hill and a second by Commissioner Ferguson to amend it, to take out one of the zeros on the first line. All in favor? Vote.
I... Oh, I thought that was a free voice vote.
Mr. Plant, Mr. Fer.
Anyone wish to change your vote? 16 yes. Motion carries to amend. Now we got to vote again, as the resolution was amended. Okay, ready for vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? 16 yes. As amended, passed. Resolution 14. To budget funds in the amount of $1,817 for revenues received during the month of January within the sheriff's budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Don't have any questions? You know, which should change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution 15. To budget funds in the amount of $21,718.40 received from insurance recovery within the sheriff's budget. Motion by Commissioner Frazier and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. We have no questions, everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Resolution 16. To budget funds in the amount of 25,000 received from the USDA within the Benton County Schools' budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions about this one? If not, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Number 17. Is a resolution to budget funds in the amount of $124,723.00 received from the state of Tennessee SPARC grant within the Benton County Schools' budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Frazier. Any questions about this one? If not, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Number 18. Is a resolution to budget funds in the amount of $5,000 from a contribution gift from the TBA within the Benton County Schools' budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. I don't see any questions, so everyone close, please vote. Mr. Matt? Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Number 19. Is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $2,000 from the unassigned fund balance within Fund 122 Drug Control in order to cover the expenditure line of trustees' commission for the remainder of the fiscal year. This will take a two-thirds vote.
Come on, it's a two-thirds vote.
Yeah. The remaining resolutions are all two-thirds. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. We have any questions about this? I have a question, if it's okay for me to ask, maybe Mr. Melton or the mayor. When this says trustees' commission, are you talking about the Benton County trustee or...
No, it's the Benton County trustee. This is, there were projections for how much that would be. This, it ran short. It, this is a real, you do this every year. It's, it does not add to her salary, doesn't add to her budget line. It's just a, really, it's a rudimentary housekeeping thing to appropriately put the money in the accounts as we get them. Mr. Melton, maybe you can add a little bit more to that.
Well, it's based on percentage. She gets a certain percentage of revenues, and that's what that is. The revenues were a little bit more than projected, therefore her percentage goes up a little bit.
Does this money come through her office first and then to the general fund? Or the money that you're talking about?
Yes, it comes through the trustee to the general fund and then it's, and it's...
Yeah, yeah, this doesn't change your budget. It's just a, it's an, it's a holdover from back in the day when the trustee and several other office holders generated fees for services. Back in the day, the sheriff used to get so much money to serve a subpoena, and that's how they got the sheriff interested in serving subpoenas, they'd pay him money.
Okay. My question is, why can't this commission be taken? Why can't she take the commission from her office instead of the general fund paying it?
This doesn't, this doesn't impact her at all. This is just a flow-through. This is an auditing requirement. It's just, like I said, it's an ancient part of the old fee system that is still embedded in our law and budgeting system.
Okay, but those laws have, were changed for some of the other offices that used to be fee offices and that are now all fee or commission, and those offices collect their commission upfront. So, that's why I was wondering, would it not save a lot of, like you said, just flow-through money if she collected?
Well, I asked Ms. Travis about this, and, and because I asked the very question, I said, well, can't we just take care of this on the front end of it? Because I literally asked that question, and it's based upon the percentages, and as it goes up, it's, it's unanticipated. You can't know what that final number's going to be. So, since it's a floating value, we do our best to guesstimate as to what it's going to be and set those lines, but when the revenues come up and sales tax and whatnot has been higher in certain areas, so we have, that, that number's gone up, therefore the percentage value of that number will go up.
I may be wrong, but I think this could be changed.
Okay.
Like you said, it's an agent, it's an ancient procedure.
If it's a statute, it would have to be changed through that.
I, I have to admit that I relied upon Ms. Travis, who I'm going to fire tomorrow for not being here tonight. So, if she's watching, it's over for her. I don't care if the kid's sick or not. So, I will know more about this tomorrow and if, to, to better able to answer your question. But I did have a conversation with her, but I did not do any reading on my own and violated the old law. Never, you always go read the case yourself.
It just seems like if it was changed, it would be a lot easier for her to collect that commission, even though she would know what the commission was according to the amount of money, so she would collect it upfront, and then you wouldn't be dealing with this. That's just my thought. So, I'm sorry, let's just, we'll move on. I just had to ask. So, any questions about it? Okay, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Okay. Resolution number 21 is the same. It is the resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $8,000. Am I off?
20.
20.
Resolution 20.
Okay. Was that not what I was reading?
Yes.
Funding amount of $8,000 from the unassigned fund balance within Fund 178 Other Capital Projects in order to cover the expenditure line trustees' commission for the remainder of the fiscal year. Any questions? Okay, please vote. Phil Melton? Anyone wish to change your vote? 16 yes. Now we're on resolution 21. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $3,000 from the unassigned fund balance within Fund 172 Community Development in order to cover the expenditure line of trustees' commission for the remainder of the fiscal year. We have no questions, so please vote. Mr. Fer?
Yes. On this resolution that you just read, on my face you here, it's got $38,000.
You're on 25.
You're damn below it.
No work. Why not? One resolution. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. And now we're on resolution 22, which is to appropriate funds in the amount of $38,200 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to cover the increased expenses within the county coroner's medical examiner budget for the remainder of the fiscal year. Have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Preston?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'm going to support this resolution. I'm just going to rise to a point of interest. I have a question. I doubt anybody here can answer the question. Mayor, it might be something you find interesting. Budget might find it interesting, so I'm going to share it with you. I remind everybody, 16,000 people in Benton County. We budgeted, we budgeted this fund, the death investigator, with a little over $71,000. Now, we're appropriating $38,000 in addition. And my question is, what is Carroll County and Henry County doing different? Carroll County, their budget reads that they budgeted $51,000, a little over $51,000 for the, for the same death for the coroner medical examiner. Now, that don't mean that they haven't given additional dollars like we're doing tonight, but their audit for 2019 and '20 was just a little over, a little under $34,000. And I remind everybody, they're 28,000 people population. Henry County, they're budgeted their, the same account with $51,200, and in 2019, their actual expenses was a little more than $34,000. It just seems to me like, and, and I remind everybody, Henry County's about 32,000 people. They're double the population that we have here. I don't expect anybody to have an answer for that, but I just thought I'd share it with everybody. It's, it's of some interest to me. I don't know what...
It's a, I, I don't have an answer for you, but, but as you said, that's of great interest to me because this is a ongoing problem. Death, regrettably, is happening, and I don't believe our mortality rate is greater than those other two counties. That, that would be a possible solution, that we just simply have more people dying. But it is something that I definitely will be looking into.
See what they might be doing different than we're doing.
I don't know, and it could be the cities are handling some of the, the cost as opposed to the county footing all of it. I don't know, but I will know the answer to that soon.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes. This would look, I don't know if budget has looked at this, but wouldn't some of the COVID monies be a good place to put some of this, for this? In other words, it's 38, we've got an increase in deaths due to COVID, I would assume.
Right.
We've got COVID monies that come into this county. Couldn't we be using another funding source from the COVID monies?
I don't, I don't know... I don't, I don't know that that's an allowable. I'd have to look at the specific funds that you're talking about to see if it's an allowable expenditure. And I'm not, I don't know if there's additional COVID monies still in the budget. I'd have to ask about that. So, let me do some checking on that, and we'll see.
I'd like for that to be considered, thank you.
If it is, then we will, we'll work it around.
That would not be using for prevention. So I don't know whether that could be.
You're, you're, if prevention is a, if that's a caveat to the money, then you're probably at the wrong end of it.
Commissioner Nunry?
To speak on what Rocky said, I suspect some, and this comes from my years in the death care industry, but I suspect some of this may be because Benton County has one small hospital and one relatively small nursing home. We have a bigger percentage of our people who die at home, not in a facility. When you die in a facility, it's no, it's not a medical examiner's case or coroner's case. Go to Carroll County, you have, you did, we did have two hospitals over there for a long time. You've got nursing homes scattered all over the county. So you have more in facility deaths that are not medical examiner deaths. And that's just an educated guess and some possibility. That is, that could be something to think about.
Good point.
Learned a lot.
Okay, anyone else? Be something for us to check into. Okay, no more questions, everyone vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Number 23. Is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $45,000 from the litigation tax jail, workhouse, courthouse reserve account in order to make necessary improvements to the Benton County Courthouse ceiling. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about this resolution?
This is the ceiling out in the second floor, right here, in the lobby area. To replace it with something that has the fans to move the air, because it's, it's freezing at the bottom. It's a sauna at the top, I've experienced that. We moved the temperature up one degree. I mean, it was unbelievable, the one degree. They were running downstairs going, you got to turn the heat down, you got to turn the heat down. So these larger fans that we're hoping to put in will, will help to mitigate that and provide a more efficient heating and cooling of the courthouse.
Okay, no questions, everyone vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. My next is the appointing of notaries. There are six. Name those, Christopher Jordan, Dietris Travis, Christina Constantine, Lisa Trout, Jamie Worthing, and Kimberly Peterman. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton to approve these people as notaries. Everyone vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, 16 yes. Next on the agenda is number 33, which is any other business. Do we have any other business to come before the commission? No other business, then I'll sign a motion to adjourn.
Objection.
We have an objection to adjourn. On a voice vote, everyone vote yes to adjourn. Please vote yes to adjourn. Amen. Any oppose? We have one, but, sorry, Rocky, you lost. Meeting is adjourned.